Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Monday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Board of County Commissioners' Work Session. We have an agenda before us that starts with two thousand and twenty-three capital asset inventory reports. And do you want to introduce?
Yeah, thank you so much, I share. Again, thank you so much for your hard work and go ahead and pass over to the Auditor's Team and lead us through. Thank you, Auditor Hall.
Great. Thank you for the record. I'm Mary Hall, Thurston County Auditor. This is an annual process. We come before the Board. There is a state statute that annually the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners shall file with the Auditor's Office, full and complete inventory of capitalized assets. It's something that my office works on and tracks and generates all the report. So Shannon Brennan from my staff is the person who takes care of and tracks all of our capital assets, so I will go ahead and turn it over to Shannon for her presentation.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for your time today. I am going to share my screen and we will go over those reports. There are three reports and let's see, can you see them? I'm trying to, if I can make them bigger. Are you able to see the first report, which is the all assets purchased during two thousand and twenty-three? That's a listing of assets, machinery and equipment that have been purchased. Included in this report is the department, the fund, and then it has an explanation of what the asset category is. We have the serial number if it is included. We have date of purchase, estimated useful life, the amount paid, the reason for the purchase, the funding source, and then the name of the seller. So if you have any questions on that, please let me know. What we do is we provide the name of the seller and sometimes it's just a bunch of the invoices to the same seller. And then included in this is the asset number, so that way we can go ahead and easily identify it and look that up in the system. The next report that I have is the inventory of all capital assets. Now, those are an inventory of all active capital assets as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. The next report that we have is going to be all assets that are sold and/or disposed of. This again is by asset number, the fund, and it provides the name and the category, the serial number if that information is provided, the disposal date, the amount paid, reason for disposal, and the name of the purchaser. There are instances where an asset is not sold, but let's say it's traded in, or we have terminated if we have a copier lease and it's returned to the vendor. There's other instances that we, it's like an administrative adjustment where an asset is disposed of. Sometimes they go through surplus and they've been destroyed, those type of instances. And then just to give you a background of how the reports are created, the information comes from our financial system, MUNIS. Then I compile the information and I distribute it to each elected office and department for the accounting department to review, and then they present it to their elected official or their director so that they review a certification. I have provided a packet of that information that shows the checklist along with each certification by office and department. If you'd like, I can present that information or you can, you've got that on your packet. Just a moment if you, let's see, there's the memo, just a moment, please. I'll stop sharing while I pull that up. Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties here for just a moment. This is the list that I've provided. It has the department elected official and the department director information. And if you scroll through, it is in order of that checklist and you will see every office and department has a certification that basically says they have verified the information. It includes those three reports that we just reviewed and it lets them, let us know that they have reviewed it and they have signed that certification. So my next question is, does anyone have a question for me regarding any of the three reports or the certification process?
Yes.
Hello, Commissioner Edwards, how are you today?
Oh, good. I didn't know. I'm trying to be a good kid in school and raise my hand on time, so. Okay, so I guess that means I get to ask the question.
Yes, please.
Is there anything in this signature block that we're signing for here today that could be affected by any of the finding issues that we just were advised of by the state auditor? And I'm specifically wondering about funds where certain things were paid out of that they're saying should not have been paid out of. So is this strictly inventory that we've got or we've disposed of? I guess it's both ways, right?
Yeah, what Shannon just presented, it's one of the big pile there is every asset that the county owns and all the different categories of each asset as of December thirty-first, and then the purchases for the year and the disposals for the years. I can't imagine that there's anything in there that you're signing would have been affected by what we've heard earlier.
All this is saying is that we have it in our possession.
Yep.
That's right. What we just talked about was how we procured it. And just the fact that we acknowledge that we have possession of it doesn't...
And, and just to, I mean, we can always make mistakes. Obviously, we've heard about mistakes, you know, earlier today. But is there any legal or legality issue? We obviously have no way personally of knowing everything that's being presented today and we're up against a timeframe to do this and get it all done right, right? So what we're being asked to do is verify it, and we've had our staff that have signed off on it, the other elected officials have signed off on their portion of it, that type of thing. But I guess my concern is now I'm gun shy. Are we following all the rules on this? That's where I'd like to have some assurance.
We are. We look through the RCWs and basically follow it very strictly. In fact, we had the RCW changed probably about, what, eight years ago or something? Because it had dates that were conflicting that we could not comply with. During that process and getting that statute modified, we also implemented a program to where when you saw all of those signature forms, now offices and departments are required to sign off and verify that the inventory in their officer department has been reviewed and is correct, so.
It's an assurance to Commissioners.
Right. So we could not come up with any other checks and balances, except I know we take ours very seriously and review it and scrutinize it very closely, and I hope that by other department heads and elected officials do the same when they sign the document attesting to the accuracy of the information.
And so we're just kind of reassigning, re-signing an attestation that we feel our staff has got it right.
We actually go might be way above and beyond the requirements of the current RCW thirty-six, thirty-two, two-ten. It's really only like one or two sentences in there, and we go above in the certifying and the detail to all the reports and everything.
And so, and I'm just going to touch on this. So we're talking about seven million dollars that maybe we didn't do it right earlier from the state auditor. That, we're saying that we got seven million dollars worth of upgrades product or something that we're trying to keep track of. We don't know if that's down to the penny or anything at that point. I mean, we're going by billings that we received and...
There was no seven million dollars. There was identified one point eight million in like furniture that was purchased.
I think what, the two really, we're talking apples and oranges. This is, the assets would be included in our, our reports, but we're just talking about these are the assets we have, not how they were paid for or by what fund or anything like this. This is just an attestation that these are the assets that we have, they have been verified.
And staff's been looking at it.
Correct.
Thank you.
I will add the seven point five million or whatever that was, that was for leasehold improvements on this building.
Yes.
That was capitalized and it shows up in that report.
Yeah, it shows up here, seven and something million.
You're not going to see the other one point eight million of furniture. We don't capitalize furniture.
Yeah.
That was, that was expensed.
That's correct.
But that value is shown here, that seven million.
Seven million.
And we're saying, yeah, we got, we got seven million dollars worth of whatever we got. Okay.
What is the threshold for something to be considered a capital asset?
It depends on category, and we actually changed that not too long ago. Do you have those memorized, Shannon? Is it, it's machinery and equipment is ten?
It's ten thousand.
Ten thousand.
We have improvements, we have buildings, we have, those type of things are seventy-five thousand dollars. Software is one million, and then infrastructure is a hundred thousand, I believe. I can pull that up quickly and look for that. Just a moment, please. We actually had that changed by RCW a few years ago, and I'm going to pull that, I'm going to pull the RCW up right away.
So anything over those amounts gets capitalized and then it gets...
That's correct.
...appreciated annually, and it shows up in our financial statements. Anything under that amount gets expensed immediately in our financial statements.
And it's also up to departments when it comes to machinery and equipment, that anything under the ten thousand dollar threshold, they have the responsibility to determine if they track them and identify them as at risk or small and attractive assets. We have a process in place that if the departments do track them as small and attractive, they assign them a small asset number and that information is tracked internally. And as part of the annual inventory process, we have that where it's reported to us as well. It is not included in these reports that we're providing you today because the RCW thirty-six point three-two point two-ten only requires capitalized assets. But we do have a process in place and departments do sign off on a equipment category identification form for anything that is under the ten thousand machinery and equipment threshold. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
So this is a document that requires your signature.
Thank you so much.
We done with that section?
Going back to the timeframe here, tell me about the timeframe. I mean, why is this presented now and we sign it now? I'm just curious. We operate on timeframes a lot, so.
So it's sort of following year end, right? These are for two thousand and twenty-three.
Right.
So we close our financial system end of March, right? So it takes a while to pull all of this together. The deadline used to be...
That one used to be...
Prior to the end of closing of the year.
It was like the middle of, yeah, it was the beginning of March, I believe. And there was always a disconnect between, you know, if you took that report and you summed it up, and then later you looked at that grand total and you looked at our financial statements, the amounts were always different because we didn't get a chance to go through all of our closing entries and, and the audit. So now what we've done is we've synced them up. We're delaying the timing of this report, so if you sum that total and you see our financial statements about a month from now, those totals will match exactly.
Right. And I don't know if you were on the board, but we had some citizen concerns because the capital asset report did not match our financial...
Some years back.
Report. This was some years ago, and it was because of timing. That was the only reason. It was a timing of when the capital asset report had to be completed versus when we closed the year. So it went to the legislature...
Appreciation of the asset values.
It was just...
It's just year end, we have, there's so many transactions, so many accruals, so many journal entries that we do subsequent to...
This is like a living document and this is a snapshot in time.
Exactly.
I had to go to China.
That's gone. Sorry, I'm sorry. So anyway, the legislature had the law changed to where now they...
So what's the date on this one? I know that it shows that it's May thirteenth, but...
December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three is like a snapshot in time, so this is what the county has as of right now.
And we're just signing it today because it's been completed.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anything else regarding that?
Are there any other questions for the Auditor's Office?
No, sir.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Shannon. All right, does that move us to the next agenda item? Thurston County Auditor's Office update?
Right, and so thank you very much for allowing me to tag along after this presentation. I believe this was scheduled for later in the week, and I'm at an Auditor's Conference beginning tomorrow, which is a pretty, pretty important conference that happens annually. So I do have a PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to have to run through it rather quickly. Typically, we have an hour now, we've got just over thirty minutes. So if I could share my screen? Great, thank you. And I believe, Leonard, this is your first, so I did include some basic overviews here that, that I probably wouldn't have included otherwise, but, and you and I have already met, but as you know, the Auditor's Office is sort of a catch-all. We have a lot of very different responsibilities. Overseal elections, financial services, which includes reporting, grants, internal audit, which there's a committee. We also are in charge of vehicle vessel licensing, recorded documents, and we took on passports beginning in two thousand and eighteen, and a lot of other miscellaneous duties as well. So last week was a big week for us. It was candidate filing week. This year it started a week early. This was legislative request from the Auditor's Association just to give us more time to proof our ballots that go to military and overseas voters would have to be mailed forty-five days prior to each election, as well as being able to prove voter pamphlets, because now every county in the state is required to produce one, which is, I think, a great thing for voters. On the first day, we were pretty busy. Typically, everybody files on the first day. We had a hundred and ten candidates file that day, which is a little different now because it's all online. It used to be everybody would show up at our office and we had these big lines and it was kind of festive. It's not that way anymore. It's kind of bittersweet, but we had three hundred and twenty-two candidates file during the week for two hundred and six races. So we did conduct our lot draw, which is tradition at the close of filing. Commissioner Menzer was there to, to do the drawing, so that was, that was great. We have had the county manager do that in the past, so maybe, so maybe next year. So talk a little bit about our facilities and our equipment. The Voter Services Center at Motman is coming along beautifully. If you ever have a spare moment to tour that facility, it's, it's looking good, it's coming together. Looks like they're ahead of schedule, which we could very well be in there for the primary election, which would really be fantastic, kind of give us an opportunity to have an election under our belt before the presidential election. You can see the pictures here. We put fencing around the generators, so I feel a little more secure with those, that people just can't, you know, walk up and, and do anything they want with those because that in the event of a power outage powers our entire facility and we...
Fancy fencing.
Pardon me?
Fancy fencing.
Yeah, there's a vendor in Arizona who does a lot of mail, and that was around their entire facility. It's very secure, difficult to climb over, and you can't cut it with a wire cutter, so that's why we didn't do chain link. So, and Homeland Security, you always run things by them. They were very happy with this fencing, which of course makes me feel a little better. Our mailroom construction, we did receive an envelope with fentanyl in it in the general election. We intercepted that fortunately at Central Services Mailroom, but when other counties received envelopes at their facility, it ended up shutting down their entire operation. So by opening our mail in this controlled environment, if that should happen in November, it is vented outside and hopefully we don't have to shut down our entire operation, which in a presidential election would really create some delays. So our ballot sorter replacement, Commissioner Mejia is...
Commissioner Mejia has a question.
Oh, okay.
He's finished here.
Sure, I can answer the question now.
Commissioner Mejia?
Thank you, Auditor Hall. I was just wondering, was it confirmed that it was fentanyl in the envelope?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
I do have one quick question. I've got some questions about your security, but I don't want a briefing in public because I don't want you to give up.
I can speak at a hundred thousand foot level.
Yeah, but I do think security is worth a lot, so I would just ask to meet with you maybe in the next week or so, so I could just get a little update of where we're at on that.
Okay.
You know, I'm looking at it from a law enforcement perspective, obviously, so. And I don't want you to have to answer a question or tell me, no, you can't say that, so.
Okay, and I'm talking a little more about that as, as the presentation goes on. But our ballot sorter is what checks in our ballots, that's our bottleneck. We had one that was purchased, I believe in two thousand and six, that we're replacing, so we're excited about that. I did meet with the city of Tumwater. One of the concerns of the Department of Homeland Security was that a lot of trucks were parking on the road, right next to our ballot processing center and voting center. So they did agree to make that side of the road non-parking or no parking, so that will be in place prior to the, the primary election. And that's a permanent no parking zone, so I really appreciate the cooperation from the city of Tumwater. They have been fantastic to work with. Some grant updates of what we have spent some of our money on. One of the Department of Justice grants we received, we used for our safe room doors, so we basically have ballistic or bulletproof doors at the entrance of those. They were about half the price of what we anticipated, so we're very excited about that. We bought two instead of one, and we do want to put more of those doors at the ballot processing center in some key locations as we remodel and expand that facility. Through the Accessible Communities Advisory Committee, we applied for a grant to install a walking path from the bus stop to the front door of the voting center. That's not in yet, but we're excited about that. One of the things, as I was giving a tour to one of the members who was in a wheelchair, he asked about a railing, and I realized we did not factor in a railing on that walking path, so we have applied for a second grant to include a railing, which is more expensive than I could even fathom, but apparently we were tied with that request at the first vote, so they'll have a final vote on June fifth, and fingers crossed that we can get grant funding for that as well and install a railing at the same time. We're waiting to hear back from our congressional delegation and Senate staff about the congressionally-directed spending request. This is the third time we have put in for this. We received interesting feedback last year that elections were considered too political for this money, which is, I can understand that because there's really nothing political about elections at all, but that's what we've heard. What we want to do with this funding is upgrade or install actually a camera system so we can actually see our drop boxes out there, which I used to want to see that just for security purposes, but after the incident where somebody tried to dig up and move one of Mason County's drop boxes, I have a different lens of why I want these cameras, but it's not an inexpensive venture because some of them will require satellite because they're in zones like Bald Hills that doesn't have internet. So hoping to do that. We also want to put in badging in certain areas of the voting center and the ballot processing center where two people have to swipe in to get into a room. And then, of course, we would like to fence the entire facility, the whole Motman complex with the fencing that you saw around our generator, similar to the way they fenced in the parking area and building one for the, you know, for the judges parking. One of the things that didn't make it onto this slide was I have been in conversations with the Attorney General's Office. Actually, they've reached out to me a couple times and they are working on a domestic terrorism effort, and I was told that they are going to be putting in a capital budget request in the next budget cycle to include funding for domestic terrorism. They were asking for pricing and things like for domestic, I mean ballistic proof doors and bulletproof sheet rock and things like that because they want to ensure that funding is available to election offices for ballot processing centers and things like that to make them more secure. So fingers crossed that they're successful next year with the governor and that they can get something in the capital budget that has a lot of zeros after, that would make funding available to election offices.
Kind of camera system are you looking at installing around those?
So it would be twenty-four seven. It would allow us to basically... So it would be 24/7. It would allow us to basically just view or monitor our boxes, so it would, it would record any activity. So if somebody, for example, I'm not even going to talk about examples, because I don't want to create ideas in people's heads, but tried to, you know, do things that were kosher with our boxes or at our boxes, if we would have that footage.
I was just thinking, if we, if we do, you know, the Sheriff's Department's proposing that Flock camera system at various points throughout the county, and I'm just curious if that would be something that could be, like, glommed onto, or that same camera system could be used to monitor or to kind of safeguard the, the drop boxes? And, you know, like, if we're already going to have a contract with that vendor or whatever, just adding some additional cameras might be a...
You mean to add to existing cameras that the county is putting in for other purposes?
If the Sheriff's Department goes forward and we put in that camera system that they're proposing, it might be like a, if it's, if it makes sense, you know, just adding extra cameras in there for your boxes might be a smart move.
Absolutely. You know, any way that we can share resources or piggyback on a contract, if the cameras will accomplish our end goal, absolutely. So we'll have Carrie try to look into that. I'll talk with the sheriff, see what they're doing, or Heidi.
Are we talking about the system at the jail and the FJC?
I'm talking, I'm talking about the Flock camera system.
Ah, that. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
So talking a little more about grants. We do provide grant services to the county. We do countywide training often, but in April and May, we are having training on, yes, we already did April, training on finding grants, as well as grant writing. And we have created an Intranet site, which has grant opportunities that offices and departments can go look at. We also produce a countywide grants newsletter that they can find out there also, with some great information and resources. And, there we go. Attorney General's Office Domestic Terrorism Group, very happy that they're, they're including or thought of, you know, reaching out to the Auditors Association, so... So moving on to TC Connect. I'm sure everybody's really aware of TC Connect. It is moving forward. We're at a pretty critical point right now, and offices and departments are very, very busy, juggling both their normal workload, as well as doing a lot of testing with the new system. We're at 62% of the scripts have passed, so, and what I really appreciate about the people working on this project is they are not afraid to fail them. If they don't work the way that they think they should or they need to work, they will fail those scripts. So, so I think that's why it's taken maybe a little longer to implement this, this product, but working really hard to get it right, if you can ever get it totally right. We are 67% complete through the 30-day testing period. We'll still continue doing a lot of testing after this, especially around, you know, budgets and, and other modules, but the budget module is in progress. We're going to begin heavy-duty testing the last week of May. Currently, we are running parallel with payroll, so we're running Munis and TC Connect parallel to ensure that, that things are matching. I think payroll has probably been one of the more challenging modules that we've had to get, make sure that we have everything right and that everything is calculating correctly. It's been an eye-opener for me of how many little nuances are in our payroll system, from leave pay to all the different contracts we have, but I think we have some amazing staff that are working really hard to make sure that, that is right. We're going to be doing countywide training before too long. We've got a lot of people working on, you know, change management, which is always a challenge when people have to change from, from one system to another. And our final go/no-go date will be around May 22nd, and, you know, if it's a, if it's a no-go, it doesn't mean a never-go. It just means that we're not to the point where we feel that it's final enough for us to do a full switch over to that system. So, and I want to commend Darren's team and Diana and everybody else who is, you know, playing those prominent roles on this product, project, because it's huge. This is probably the biggest project the county has ever undertaken. It's pretty big. With this effort comes a couple challenges. I don't know, it was before my tenure, but we entered into some inter-local agreements with some outside agencies that the county does accounting services for. This isn't, this is kind of out of scope, not the norm, but we do, we provide accounting services to Thurston County Regional Planning Council, as well as the Area Agency on Aging. We're struggling with some of the security issues, trying to make sure that they can get the services they need while we still maintain the appropriate security. So we're working through that process and really doing the best we can to make everybody happy in this, in this endeavor. So, you know, if you receive any questions from people out there, feel free to send them my way. We're working through this the best that we can, and hopefully everybody will be happy in the end. Talk a little bit about budget to actual, later in the year is when this report actually starts becoming a little useful. This is really a moment in time. Shows actual expenditures versus budgeted expenditures, actual revenue versus budgeted revenue. We're, we're doing pretty good, pretty much on track. This is a great spreadsheet to look at. It gives you a look at the percentage of year that we are through, and, for example, we're 33% through the year, and then if you look at the, the last column, it'll give you the percentage that offices have spent. And I know, we look at this in our budget monitoring just to ensure that, you know, people aren't way out of line in what they're spending, but you also see trends over time. We're right on track right now, if you can get down to the bottom. So total spend, we're at 29.5%, and we're 33% through the year. I know I can talk about my office. We're showing 32% spent, but as the year goes on, that actually lags behind where we are, because our big expenses are, of course, in the presidential election, and then, of course, our revenue is also when we bill out our services for the general election, and especially in a presidential year. So we provide this to the Chair of the Board every month, and we're going to be presenting it here as well, just to point out any, any anomalies that we might see. We also provide a cash balance report that shows you the cash, cash balance for every fund out there, so that can be a useful report for you as well. Any questions on those two reports?
You supply that to the Chair of the Board, and that's been going on for a long time, right? So what would it take to have each one of the county commissioners get that same information? Is that up to the Chair to make that determination?
Sure, or I could carbon copy the county manager and have the county manager distribute that.
I, I think anything we can do in the future to make members of the Board of County Commissioners aware of as much as we possibly can, we have less likelihood of making mistakes. That's all I'm...
Okay.
I, I kind of enjoy looking over the numbers and seeing where they're at, so I would just ask that it be made available to all the county commissioners.
Can I see Commissioner Menzer?
If that's okay.
Sure.
I don't know who makes the determination, so that's what I'm...
I'm required by statute to send it to the Chair of the Board, so that's, so I do that. Commissioner Menzer?
Yeah, well, on that point, I, I certainly not the one that made that determination, and I, my understanding was that it was because the Chair sits on the Finance Committee that that was, but maybe there was another statute that Mary referred to. The question I have is about, and it kind of connects back to our earlier meeting this morning. You were showing the cash balances in the funds, and there was something that the state auditor mentioned about a end-of-the-year negative balance, and then what they said was as a remedy that we should have, have, when something like that happens, we do an inter-fund transfer or something, so there's no benefit from one another. And I'm trying to understand what that would look like, or, I mean, I thought we did that in, in that case, so I'm just curious, based on that report that you showed, if we saw something, what is the thing that we didn't do that we were supposed to have done, based on what the state auditor said?
Well, what I know, and it was pretty simple, how we ended up where we were, and correct me if I'm wrong, Robyn, this was simply human error. It was simply human error. The intent was to make those whole by the end of the year, and it was simply human error.
That's correct. We were, we needed to wait for the budget amendment to be approved, which came in mid-December, and the transfer of cash was supposed to have happened by December 31st, and instead, the transfer happened during the close period after December 31st. That gave us the negative balance. It's my understanding, what the state auditor is suggesting, is if we have a negative fund balance, that we do an inter-fund loan, and there, we have a process in the county for that, that we have followed in other circumstances. That involves going through the Finance Committee, approval by the Board of County Commissioners, with interest rates set by the county treasurer. So we'll be watching that. I've been chatting very briefly and had initial conversations with Diana about how to better monitor that year-end report, because by the time we get the December report, it's too late.
Mary, it was all of the transfers were done in December. One is missed.
Yeah.
It's fixed now.
It is.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Shortly after year-end.
We had a plan in place.
Yeah. Any other questions about that? So I know in the, we've talked a little bit about budget over the course of the last month. We have had a budget memorandum of understanding between the Commissioner's Office and the Auditor's Office. It's pretty outdated. I believe this was originally put together, gosh, 2015 or 16, something like that. So Chief Deputy Auditor Diana Benson is working with Nicole in the Budget Office to, to revise that MOU. They've had a couple meetings so far. They've gone very well, according to what I've been told, and they're meeting weekly to, to finish that up. It will likely look a lot different than what it did before, but I think there's going to be, you know, a lot of shared responsibility and cooperation between the two offices, which is, I, I think, a really great model. The call for budget is going to be June 27th. One of the things that was discussed is doing also, you know, we'll open up the meeting, then actually talk about revenue, revenue forecasts, so it gives offices and departments a better understanding. You know, hopefully we're not going to do a cut exercise this year, but, but I think it's important that we ensure that everybody is fully informed of what you're seeing, what our financial reality is going into the budget process. So I look forward to seeing how that shapes Switching gears into our passport fair, we did have Congresswoman Strickland's office reach out to us earlier in the year about coordinating a passport fair with their office, so we did that. We decided to open on a Saturday, which was absolutely fantastic. So we were open on the 20th. We, staff was great at volunteering. Every single person who worked that day was busy. We had a steady stream of customers all day. We were open from 10 to 2, 10 to 1. We did 53 applications and photos, and we're the only full-time passport office in the county. We received really great feedback. People appreciated us being open on the weekends, so certainly can't do that every weekend, because the overtime would probably, you know, probably wouldn't pay for issuing the passports if we did it every weekend, but we do plan on doing that on a, on a somewhat regular basis throughout the year, maybe quarterly or twice a year. But we've been busy. In April, we produced 795 applications, and year-to-date, we are almost double what we did the entire year in 2023. So it's really picking up. We're busy.
How many is that, just roughly?
Um, let's see how fast Diana is. Maybe show the chart.
Yeah.
Okay. This gives you an idea. Of course, we started in October of 18. We shut down during the COVID period, just because passports is a very in-person type of operation, but it's really, really taken off, and every month this year has set a record.
Is there any chance that this whole business of, you need an enhanced ID now or a passport coming up in about a year to, I guess, to fly to Boise, Idaho, you got to go through all that. So what I'm wondering about, is there any possibility that you could incorporate that with Department of Licensing, where you could take the information that they take at the driver's license stations and, I don't know, send that in, and people could also get an enhanced driver's license out of your shop, being as you're already doing more than that, it sounds like. I think the requirements are stiffer for the passport, but I don't know that. Maybe they're very similar, and you could, you know, collect another 10 bucks. I don't know what they, I mean, I don't know what they're charging, but...
Yeah, Department of Licensing, their vehicle vessel licensing operation and driver's license is, is very separate and segregated. We are actually promoting passports over enhanced driver's licenses, because it does everything and more, and it costs about the same amount of money. So we actually have a flyer that we insert in every single vehicle vessel renewal that encourages them to get a passport in lieu of a enhanced driver's license. So, yeah.
Just trying to find more revenue, that's all.
Yeah, well, we're trying to get them to make it the positive right choice. It, you know, gives them more, so we are pointing that out anytime that we mail a renewal to folks. So, yeah. So, but it's, we've been busy, and it's, it's exciting, and it looks like they are going to actually keep the deadline for May of 2025. If you recall, they have moved it, seems like five times every year, but I, I suppose it's helped your passport revenue.
I was going to ask if we've heard if they're going to move it again specifically with it.
We've actually heard it's firm.
It's firm?
Yeah, the date is firm.
Until they get close and find out that there's a problem, and then they'll do it. They've only moved it about four times now.
I know. Just to briefly talk about the other committees that I'm on or other updates. So we project, and I know it's early, the fund balance at the end of the year to be 36 million, so that's, that's pretty healthy. And I always believe that both Robyn and Darren tend to estimate conservatively, so of course, this all depends on many factors, you know, sales tax and, and things like that, other revenue. But those we report out at the Financial Management Committee every month also. The other committee that I chair is our Internal Audit Committee, and... And Commissioner Mahia, when you were chair, you had talked about potentially having a commissioner sit in on that committee, which I think would be a fantastic idea. You know, it's a high-level overview, but it's a, having an internal auditor, an internal audit committee, I think, is really healthy for the county because they really take a look at the overall financial health. And, you know.
Vice Chair, is that what you're saying?
Vice Chair, yeah.
All I'm told for everything.
No, it's a great committee. You know, we take a look to ensure that we've got strong financial controls, you know.
She's looking at me.
Segregation of duties to ensure that, you know, we aren't going to have fraud and things like that. So I think it would be fantastic to have a, you know, a board member participate. The county manager sits on that committee. I think the vice chair is very excited to participate in it, so I think.
Have the fox guarding the hen house.
So, yeah, it's a good, it's a good committee. So, great, I look forward to seeing you all make sure that.
Did you hear that train coming?
Yeah.
I think it's great, and I'll, I'll help you as the vice chair learn about the different moving pieces in the county.
Yeah, there you go. You do learn a lot about offices and departments.
Commissioner Menzger's not here. We should be volunteering him.
I'm here, I'm here.
The other thing I wanted to talk about, Commissioner Edwards, you had talked about security as it relates to law enforcement. We are having a tabletop exercise. We do a lot of these throughout, well, every year, but even more so in presidential years. This has a law enforcement focus where we have people from the Sheriff's Department, the various law enforcement agencies across the county will be there to participate. It's June 4th at 1 o'clock. If anybody would like to attend, they're always very interesting. And we have, Department of Homeland Security is actually taking the lead with our Emergency Management Department on planning the scenarios or what I call injects. So I will not know what's going on, nor will anybody on my staff. So it's a really good exercise. I really believe that it teaches us how to think on our feet when we're faced with situations that are out of the norm, that you don't anticipate, like a worldwide pandemic in a presidential election year. I think, I think we pivoted gracefully because of this work that we do. And I think it would be great for anybody who would like to participate to sit in on that. So you are all welcome, including, including your staff. We only have two of you, of course, or it becomes a public meeting, which we don't want. You know, what, these are private for a reason, but I think you'd find them enjoyable. I actually love them, so. So if you'd like to participate, just let us know. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We have six minutes.
Commissioner Menzger, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Auditor Hall.
Mary, could we get a copy of our point for the record?
Sure, absolutely. We will send that electronically to.
To the clerk.
Okay. To the clerk, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. So our next item on the agenda is state of the solid waste system.
Right on time.
And again, thank you very much for allowing me to be back on that. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Good morning, Jennifer Walker, Public Works Director. And with me today is Jeff Bigford, who's our Solid Waste Manager, and Amanda Romero, who is the Solid Waste Senior Program Manager. So this is an annual presentation that we provide to the board on the state of the solid waste system. We're scheduled for 30 minutes, and we expect to probably take off at the beginning or not anymore. So with that, I'm going to have Jeff go right into it.
I presume you want to hand it out or? Oh, okay, all right, very good. Everything very good. Okay, good morning, Commissioners. Bigford, Solid Waste Manager. So today to kind of give you an overview of the solid waste system here in Thurston County, how we've, what we've been up to last, last year, and some of the things that we have coming up coming here. So just a quick review, we have three solid waste facilities here in Thurston County. Who most of you are familiar with, there's the Waste Recovery Center in Lacey, which is our primary facility, as well as two smaller facilities, drop box facilities, and one in Rainier and one in Rochester. Solid Waste Division currently has 28 employees that primarily, kind of separated into different primary tasks. We operate, employees operate our three sites, tollhouse workers, household hazardous waste technicians. We have staff that maintains the old closed landfill at the Waste Recovery Center, which is the old closed Fox Prairie landfill. And then we have staff that perform planning and administrative duties.
Before you go to the next slide, I'm curious why that says Skookumchuck right above between Tenino and Rainier.
Why does that? That did throw me off to a, but I wasn't going to say anything.
Being as you're going on, I wouldn't have probably said anything either, but now you're going away from it. What's that about? Is the river maybe miss?
It's just in the, it's just in the wrong place. I figured it's not your map.
It's flaming on Google Maps.
It's also distorted a little bit, so we were trying to have it fit the screen, so I think it's.
I mean, that's the chute drainage there, I think.
Where Skookumchuck should be underneath.
Underneath there.
507, but it doesn't matter.
Well, it should be right there where that reservoir is.
We'll make sure it's removed.
I mean, I thought maybe, I thought it was a test to see if we were paying attention. Okay, good enough, just wondered. It's funny, I noticed that. Takes us countryward to see that stuff.
So at the Waste Recovery Center, as we like to call it, the work, we have a lot of things going on out there. First off, as I mentioned just a little bit ago, is the site of the county's primary solid waste landfill, which closed back in the year 2000. As this happens when you close an old landfill is you are committed by ecology to provide 30 years of post-closure care. So basically, a lot of the facilities that are overlie the old closed landfill. We have a lot of things going on out there, such as we have the primary transfer station building, where the public, as well as commercial haulers, on route haulers bring their waste, where it's then compacted, reloaded, and the waste is then taken down to the.
What's the InterCity Transit Park? What is that?
Sure, I will. InterCity Transit Park, that is, we have a inner government agreement, InterCity Transit. They lease that portion of the old closed landfill. That was.
It's a park and ride.
It's a park and ride. So the bus, the buses come through there, people park and take that transit. And it was done about over 10 years ago.
For the transit that goes to the.
No, I mean, makes sense, it just, the tighter.
That was a lease agreement, and it does have another 10 years on that agreement. So again, we meant to be, collect waste. We also collect organics at the Waste Recovery Center. That's both from the commercial haulers, as well as from self-hall public. That material is ground up and then hauled to Brady Composting Facility in Shelton. Also overlying the old landfill, we have a dog park. We have, there's two pieces to it, one for small dogs and large dogs. It's very popular and heavily used. Closed Loop Park, which is adjacent to that, and near our outbound scales. That is actually a demonstration garden that was put together. That is actually maintained by the master recycler composter and master gardeners. They take care of that and use it as a demonstration. They have classes and trainings out there in composting and things like that. Hassel House, which is our household hazardous waste collection facility, that people bring their pesticides, old fuels, and other dangerous chemicals out there where they're collected, drummed up, and then hauled away to the appropriate disposal recycling facilities. Additionally, we have a fairly large recycling depot center there, just right next to Hassel House. And the sole thing to point out here is this facility is open all but four days a year, so 361 days a year to the public. The only days we are actually closed are New Year's Day, 4th of July, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. That being said, we still have to staff it two of those other days because the on route haulers pick up, still have to provide staffing Thanksgiving Day and 4th of July, even though we're close to the public on those days. So there's really only two days a year that that facility is not staffed with county staff.
Who maintains the dock park? Who maintains the dock park?
Oh, we do. We provide, we stock it with, like, everything, boot bags, and we can pick up the trash from that facility. Dropbox facilities, again, one in Rainier and one in Rochester. They're both quite small in size, about five acres apiece. Rochester actually has a slightly bit more capacity than the Rainier does, Rainier facility does. They actually have three tipping walls compared to the two in Rainier. And each has a small area for recycling as well. Though the recycling provided at these two facilities is much more limited than what you'll see out at the Waste Recovery Center, due to limited space. Some of the things that we aren't able to do is we cannot able to recycle appliances, you know, refrigerators, tires. Additionally, yard debris that's brought to this facility has to go as waste because you don't have the space to accept it as organic recovery. Next slide, please. Just a little, some data on, you know, what we've been seeing out there over the last number of years.
Jeff, I was going to ask you one thing about your Rainier site. You said there were five acres each one of those?
Correct.
Is that the total? Isn't that one in a gravel pit or something that, so we own like 20 acres or something? But it's occupying five acres, is that what's going on?
So, okay, so I'll start with Rainier. Rainier is, it's about a five-acre site. It is immediately adjacent to the Rainier Pit, which is also public records owned. It's a separate parcel. And likewise, at Rochester, it is adjacent to the Sergeant Pit, which is also public records owned.
So county land is adjacent to it? Okay, good enough, that's fine, thanks.
And at the Waste Recovery Center, this is the first one to give you a feel for inbound waste. This is all the waste that comes to the Waste Recovery Center. And as you can see, after we've come off, and this will be a recurring trend, you'll notice, and we talked about Rainier and Rochester, we're starting to come off some of our post-pandemic highs. We kind of peaked in 2020 on a lot of things. Again, people were home more, actually generating more waste related to that. So while we saw some growth in '21 and '22 in overall waste, we did actually see a drop this past year in, you see, it's in several different categories.
What do you think that's from? Why are we?
One, again, the pandemic, people were, again, were working more at home, generating more material waste because they were doing more remodeling. And then I think people getting back were extreme, not quite producing as much. Economics might have something to do with that as well. Again, the price, the economy, prices have gone up, producing and consuming less because of that. You know, there's probably a bunch of various factors, but those would be some of them. Going to the slide over here, this one has organics, which is the yard debris and food waste that comes to the Waste Recovery Center. You'll notice, you know, it was fairly steady, but a massive drop in 2020, 2023. And that wasn't, wasn't so much necessarily a drop in that being generated. What that is, is starting May 1st of last year, if you recall, Republic Services took over the contract for running that facility, as well as running the organics. Well, LeMay, which they do all the curb site collection for organics for everywhere else in the county outside of Olympia. They, starting on May 1st of last year, they started taking that, instead of coming to us, they started taking that directly to Silver Springs Compost, down towards Rainier, which is their own facility that, so they wanted to, they internalized it by taking that material to there. So we're not receiving, that material's being collected, it's just not coming to us anymore. So that's why you see about almost a third drop in that tonnage. Next slide, please. So. Some, oh, sorry. Were they were developing that facility to take their own material?
The facility existed prior to, and it's where our material went when LeMay was our contractor. They were sub to Republic. When the new contract came in, there was not an agreement between, for organics. It wasn't discussed. And so between the two parties, and so LeMay chose to transfer.
They didn't want to pay their rivals, essentially, because that's kind of what they would be doing.
Rival contract for our region.
And you'll see at the Rainier Dropbox facility, there's similarly, we're seeing some drop off, particularly in 2023, and this is for the waste coming in, like, for what we figure for similar reasons at the Waste Recovery Center. And likewise, we're seeing even a large, a little bit similar trends, but a little, even a little bit larger percentage drop in Rochester. And our next slide has to do with overall customer counts for all of our sites. Similarly, we're seeing that drop off, again, for the number of folks coming. This is, in a way, a good thing of sorts, as far as, as we've spoken here before. All of our, three of our facilities have been at, you know, at, even a lot of times above our capacity. And customer counts is a big one. They did that just to our ability to handle people and manage vehicles.
When you said all of your locations, did you mean Rainier and Rochester and the work?
Correct.
So it's the three combined?
So it's, now we have, like, in the summertime, we get very backed up in all three locations. So having some reduction in customer counts is to our benefit. But there's still, you know, population growth coming. Waste is going to continue to grow, that's just how that tends to work. But I see this as probably a temporary reduction. Again, I think economy has something to do with it as well. So I'm going to talk about some of our, officially, litter program. I mean, that's, that's a, is a part of the solid waste division staff. So it gives some highlights on what's been going on with our litter program. First off, again, it'd be, actually officially became part of the solid waste division last year, 2023. We currently have one FTE, one full-time person, and one seasonal employee on staff. We typically hire for a six-month period during the peak garbage roadside pickup season. We additionally are, will be hiring a reg, new regular full-time flagger labor position, which is just recently approved in this, this year's budget for additional staffer to assist with this effort. Because, trust me, there's more than enough waste roadside to pick up. And it was, again, only having a single FTE was limiting, so.
And are you using the inmate and diversion process regularly now?
We do, actually. Want to talk about the?
Sure, we use inmate crews that are on work release from Cedar Creek Facility. And so we get those periodically throughout the month. We keep a calendar and they connect with us and let us know when they have a crew for us. So it's not every day. Yeah, we also take county community service volunteers that are getting hours for the drug court. So we also get those folks.
How many hours do you get out of that program?
I have not data, but not on me.
If we've got a full-time position, is there any reason we couldn't? Because you didn't have a full-time position. Now you're going to have a full-time position?
We had one, and now we're adding it. We're getting a second so that they can have assistance.
I guess I'd wonder, I see garbage everywhere I go. I think, I think garbage ought to be a capital crime myself.
I agree.
That's, that's how serious I take it. And I really do think we should be, you know, doing everything we can to keep our community looking as good as we can. And if you can do that seven days a week, or whatever it takes, I mean, maybe, somebody has to have a day off once in a while, I guess. But I would like to see that actually promoted more, to use more of the diversion and more of the inmate labor, because it helps them, you know, and it helps our community.
I think it's a combination. Because it's not a guarantee, and we're not sure how many will get. Not having, getting the extra person that the board approved in the, in the budget process is going to help with that. We're also looking at doing adopt a road program. So that's a part of Amanda's responsibility this year is to develop that further, to actually do just what you're talking about, so that when you come into Thurston County, you see a difference. Like, it's clean. The roads are clean, the right of way is clean. So we're focusing on that. The diversion clients that we get, they're not guaranteed. So if we get them, we get to do more that day. But if we don't, with that extra person, we'll still have two people out there doing it.
It means there's one person if we have no seasonal, the seasonal off time when we don't have a seasonal staff. And if we have no inmates, then there's a single person out cleaning up litter, which is less safe than having two. And you can get more pickup heavier things and two people.
Just to confirm, we're talking about specifically county right of way, not state right of way, et cetera?
Both. So we do have some state off and on ramps that we get, that we clean up as a result of the Department of Ecology grant.
It is specifically, we have a couple.
And you, you did say you're getting people from Cedar Creek or something, right?
Mm-hmm. We do get inmates.
Yeah, so there's state inmates involved too. I don't care where you find the garbage, just get as much as you can and get it for you somewhere.
And as I mentioned, we leverage inmate and court diversion labor. Additionally, we received a grant from Ecology for this upcoming 2023, 2025 biennium of $170,000 that assists with our program funding. And last year, we picked up approximately 275,000 pounds of trash.
That's a picture of the new vehicle with the hitch on the back that was funded, we paid for by the Department of Ecology grant that we received.
Okay, that came from the 2021, 2023 biennium from Ecology. Basically, and one of the key pieces, this new piece of equipment that they funded, it has a small crane in the back of it. It's good for lifting up, you know, appliances, soap. But I mean, there's certain things that are just so bulky and are difficult to lift. So for worker safety, that's a big improvement.
And if you didn't have that grant, you're using tipping funds or tipping fees or solid waste fee? What are you, what are you doing?
Basically, the net result after the grant is split 50-50 between solid waste and roads. Between the two, those two divisions.
Why couldn't it be all solid waste?
I want to answer that one.
I like to save, I do like to save money for roads, if possible.
Fund shall benefit enough.
Well, I don't care about the.
Your state law.
Well, that's okay, but garbage is garbage, and it needs to be put into the garbage pit. And we ought to run around thugging people that throw garbage out, but they won't allow that. So I'll go along with it at that point. But we need to stretch it out and try to protect other funds.
I think this is a stretch.
For using that, any fund but using the solid waste fund, because it is solid waste that you're picking up and you're, you know, I'm glad we got the.
And then we end up with the auditors back, and you'll be on them about how we created a situation where they gave us another finding.
Yeah, well, I'd battle that with them.
Yeah.
So it's, it is road right of way that we're cleaning up. And so with the solid waste division, that fund picking up 50%, I think we're doing exactly what you're talking about, which is stretching and.
Okay. And next slide. So elsewhere in the solid waste division, some organizational and operational improvements that we've done?
I want to go back, but like, I was, I do kind of want to go back. Do we do anything outside of, like, hiring, you know, inmate labor or the one or two people? Because I know, I know a lot of people that just will go out and pick up trash if you ask them to. So are there any, like, volunteer or stewardship programs or, like, they're all-stars? I mean, there's, there's people in tonight that will pick up, you know, thirty, forty bags of trash, and I give them a gift card here and there to do it. Like, do we have any incentive programs for the public or?
Well, we're working on it, and that's, you know, it hasn't been established, surely, it's not for a long time. Again, as previously mentioned, is the Adopt a Road, Adopt a Park. Yes, which is, most counties tend to have them. I mean, you'll see them all over the place. So that's something that basically, you know, individuals, they would, you know, don't want to be just a road. Or, you know, if people want to adopt a park, that'd be great too. They commit a certain amount of time, they, usually after a certain period of time, they get recognition with a sign over the, you know, this mile or whatever.
Service clubs and such.
Yeah.
Also have quite a few neighborhood groups that are in touch with, with us and will let us know when they're planning to have a cleanup day, and will supply them with safety vests and tools to pick up that they can then return when they're done. And then they'll tell us where they left the piles of the orange bags, and we'll pick them up and take them to the work.
You guys have been amazing about that, too. I know, like, just when we've called for the trash bags and then, you know, they tell us, well, just pile them up here and let us know. And then the next day, trash bags are gone, volunteers pick them all up. So, I mean, it, it, it does happen, and it's been pretty great.
I think that's our community litter program, which has, has been quite successful. And what we're looking at is trying to expand that and then also expand the Adopt a Road, Adopt a Park, that, you know, many hands making this.
The Adopt a Road thing, that was one of my favorite Seinfeld episodes.
The luxury thing.
When Ray heard Adopt a Road.
I just want to say that there's a day for everything, and National Cleanup Day is September 21, 2024.
It's got to be cleanup month.
It just says Cleanup Day, and. So if Public Works is interested in doing.
Veterans only get one day a year. I will not support a whole month of cleanup unless veterans get a whole month.
You've heard that before.
Yes.
I see that sinking you.
So if Public Works wants to do an event on September 21st to gather up volunteers, link, link.
Thank you.
Make a note of that.
Thank you for the many opportunities that.
To volunteer. And you know, they just volunteered me for something at the last briefing, so.
We used to get Fort Lewis and McCord to come down, I think on that same day, and did cleanups all through the county.
So. United Ways Day of Caring is an excellent day to jump on a bandwagon. And I know, like, we had, like, whole Air Force squadron come down and pick it up for us on the United. And you just sign up for their day, and they provide the labor, and you provide. I don't know, have we ever participated in that?
I don't believe.
Like McDonald's or Burger King.
It's a, it's a good one to jump on with, because they, they like, yeah, people sign up to volunteer, and all you got to do is give them a project.
Amanda, you've got.
Noted. Yeah.
Sounds like we research a volunteer program, opportunities to get folks.
And then other things over the past year. We managed the implementation of our new solid waste operations, maintenance, transport, disposal group for the public services beginning, it's about a year ago, a little over a year ago. Received local solid waste financial assistance grant funds for the upcoming biennium, or for the current biennium, 23 to 25, of $568,000 from Department of Ecology. And that is specifically aimed at defraying our costs at Hassel House. Does that be for labor as well as the hauling of the material away for disposal? Which is a significant portion of our expenses related to that. And then also, a little less than a year ago, we completed a waste characterization study. It was done by a consultant for us. Amanda was actually out there on the picking line sorting through garbage there for a week, four times that they get here. And what that does, that helps guide our staff in program planning, because basically it's what's, what's still being thrown away and what's the percentages. So based upon what you're seeing more of, it helps to guide our decisions on recycling programs, education outreach efforts, and that sort of thing. So we have that completed study over last year. As far as infrastructure improvements, the Wasting Recovery Center pumps system upgrades. It's been, that started out, construction that began last year, and it's, will be complete in about a couple, a month or two. It was about a $3.8 million overall. And what that really was doing is replacing a lot of very old pumps. Again, landfill closed in 2000, so a lot of systems for stormwater, landfill leachate, landfill gas, like gas condensate that comes out of that. Pumps were failing all over the place. We have a lot of them on site. So this, this upgrade is replacing a lot of pumps as well as incorporating the controls of those and different valves are related to that into our new SCADA system, which was completed a year ago. And then the other substantive project that was just completed is these new break room buildings at the Wasting, that's right, at Rainier and Rochester, Rainier and Rochester Dropbox sites. You can see from the photos, this is kind of what the break building on the left looked like, basically our little toolhouse. It was a combination break building and restroom. So it was not. It was tiny. So at those facilities, there is no place outside of that to be out of the weather, to eat lunch, take a break, short of being in the restroom and microwaving your food in there. So we built these, they're about eight by twenty, the whole buildings that are, again, this brand new, just opened up out of those two facilities. About three.
Eight by twenty?
Eight by twenty.
Just a little heated room?
Yep, heated, air-conditioned.
It's $125,000 for two of those?
Yeah, they had to be stick-built. Unfortunately, we looked at other options, but they were shot down through planning and other places. So we ended up bidding for those.
The auditor isn't looking at that, are they? It seems like a lot.
We follow all proper procurement process.
Next slide, it's, I'm not going to, they're teeny. Really, it's, it's our CIP for the next five years, but I'm just going to talk about the three that are highlighted in yellow, which is the projects that, the larger projects that will be, you have heard and will be hearing more about here over the next year particularly.
And if I may just, the key takeaway being, we do annual capital project planning every year that the board sees, it goes to the Planning Commission, so it's an annual process.
So I know we've run over the CIP before, but the three in particular that I just want to highlight. The first is the compactor replacement overhaul out at the Wasting Recovery Center. As you know, we've had, the compactor is aging. It goes down more than we would care for it to have. So the project really is to improve the reliability of the compactor operations, because when the compactor is down, waste tends to accumulate quicker than we would care to see it and can overwhelm the.
Who's running that? Your contractor? Usually, we buy the equipment and the contractor runs it?
I disagree, and they maintain it as well. And they are responsible for the first $50,000 of, of, of not normal, just everyday maintenance, but any unusual breakdowns that there is. Republic Services is actually responsible for the first $50,000 of maintenance or of fixes of beyond just everyday, you know, oil things, lube things, you know, that kind of stuff. That, that's their responsibility regardless. So the one that's removed, the ones that are existing now, will be, we're going to have them clean it up, overhaul it, and we're going to place it, going to place it back in the far reaches of the Wasting Recovery Center so we can reuse it when we do the work reconfiguration and creating a new transfer facility for self-haul customers. The cost is expected to be about $3.2 million, and it'll be, it's going to take through next year, probably about this time before it will be installed is our best estimate. Once we have our final contract up, it's about a nine to 10-month build cycle for the, for them to actually construct this compactor. So it takes, it's quite a bit of lead going into it. And that all depends where you fall in the queue of their construction, because they have a lot of other clients that look for builds. The next one is the worksite reconfiguration. Again, the kind of the concept behind this is to upgrade our traffic flow to reduce the customer queuing issues and traffic conflicts, particularly between the commercial on-rout type vehicles and their public self-hauls. Because they, right now, they're side by side. Some issues with potential safety. Also to relocate some of that infrastructure off the old closed landfill, because it does settle and creates issues with maintenance. Again, hopefully increase our safety and functionality, as well as to meet, you know, current future regulatory requirements as well as our capacity requirements. Right now, in the summertime, we get hammered with over a thousand self-haul customers, which. What, what kind of customers? Over a thousand self-haul customers in the summer, on a summer weekend.
In a weekend?
On summer day.
On a day?
A thousand a day?
What was the term?
Self-haul.
Self-haul.
Taking your own trash.
So that'd be, yeah, so basically the non-commercial, you know, not the packer trucks or the drop box trucks. So the idea would be to increase the ability of this facility up and out into the future for the next 20-plus years to be able to, because, again, as population grows, we're just going to continue to get more, more customers coming at us. So we need to be able to plan for that.
And a quick question.
Certainly.
Sorry, this may be off track a little bit, but in the conversation about preventing littering and illegal dumping, does our current hauler offer any incentive programs to, for bulk pickup to encourage people to take care of their stuff there at the house rather than driving out somewhere and dumping it off into, in the trees?
Well, I think they do have, you know, for bulk, do you offer a bulk pickup for a price, obviously?
Supposed to be charged folks.
Yeah, that'd be.
They bring a box out and drop it off. And it's relatively reasonable.
But generally speaking, I think, you know, if somebody is of the mind that they're going to dump it, they're kind of of the mind that they're going to do that. I mean, it's, it's aggravating.
If they knew they were going to save, you know, face penalties, they wouldn't do it. But they don't face any penalties. They ought to be beaten severely.
On that note. And the other, the other large project.
We'll continue to trash.
We just talked about.
It's no longer dumped, county.
And this one we actually, again, the South County, potential South County transfer station, that kind of just talks about the process, we'll be doing this here a couple of weeks ago, talking about that. So we had that briefing back in April. And again, that's still on our plate, and we'll continue to move that forward. So for the, there we go. So for upcoming, or really upcoming year, besides those, obviously, those three capital projects. First one is, we're going to begin performing a solid rate, solid waste rate study and actually kicking that project off this weekend. And we should be working on this over the next six, seven months. We haven't actually had a rate study performed or a rate increase, solid waste rate increase since 2012. So it's already been 12 years since the last time solid waste rates were increased here. So, you know, we're still looking pretty good, but again, we need to have the analysis done to look out in the future, particularly with, you know, potential capital projects and just, we had the new contract with Republic that changed our pricing. So really give it a good look to see, you know, where are we at, how we stand. There's, we already know certain things like organics were way undercharging because it's a net, significant net cost for us. So that's one example. So we'll be looking at that, and this obviously can make it back to the board as we get more, get something put together. We talked about the next one, expansion of the litter program, including development of an adopt a park and road. We'll be looking at doing some solid waste, county solid waste ordinance changes, particularly updating the minimum required levels of services, particularly in relation to recycling. So, how old are those? Do you recall?
Those are from the early 2000s or possibly the 90s.
Yeah, so they're outdated, but so we need to make some edits in there. So we'll be working with that through SWAC. And again, ultimately, I'll be coming to the board because it's an ordinance change. We'll be increasing our education outreach out at Thurston County schools. That's something where we have, haven't had the staff really to put that effort. And actually, we got thwarted by COVID initially, because we couldn't go out. And as that's starting to pull back, as in this year's budget was approved, another education outreach for the mega position, which is specifically aimed at youth and getting into schools. So the thought will be to target. So the thought will be to target certain grade levels, not, you know, not hit everybody, but to get in their, the schools and start doing more education and outreach related to waste reduction, recycling, reuse, et cetera. Additionally, we, we coordinating with EDF Renewables for the, over the next year plus for the potential development of that solar array or the old closed landfill at the Waste Recovery Center. That's, I know the board approved back in March, a pair of contracts. One was a right of entry for them to do some preliminary investigative work. Another one was basically getting a two-year period to develop a, a long-term lease. So we're working with, with that company related, working on that along with Rebecca Harvey. And lastly, working in coordination with Public Health and Social Services as they just began at the beginning of this month, the process of updating the household hazardous waste management plan. We did a solid waste management plan update, which that board approved back in 2021. But the household hazardous waste management plan hadn't been updated since 2014. So Public Health, as I'm sure you know, got a grant from Ecology to do that. So they're working along with us, we're assisting. And if there'd be a lot of the public output or outreach and input will be coming through the SWAC process. So they'll be running through that eventually and obviously eventually to the board, PHS desk, but we'll be working in units and obviously we have a vested interest because a lot of that go to is Hazen House.
Who's putting that contract together with, is it with Pidgeot Power?
Oh, on this, on the solar?
Yeah.
That's, EDF is working with PSE, Pigeon Sound Energy. It's an agreement between them for the power purchase agreement between them. We would just be providing the, basically, a land lease for them to play.
Space, right? So that's something that the county is doing through Public Works or?
So I know we have.
If you guys aren't doing it, who's doing it? Who's making the arrangements for how much power we're going to, how much power is anticipated to be developed?
Well, the power pieces between PSE and EDF Renewables, our, our piece would be the lease agreement, which would be, we're talking about between legal counsel and our real estate as well.
Are we getting some benefit from that?
We, we will, they're looking, we would be getting some sort of host fee and actually they're.
We're still negotiating, but the terms will be.
Yeah, they're actually looking at getting, they have two companies, they're getting a, a commercial appraiser to look at what those host fees might look like that, that's looking at, that has looked at other solar arrays over old closed landfills. So there's, looking at getting a professional appraisers to look at what that might be. So we don't know at this point in time. Commissioner Mensah?
Thank you. On your piece about education and outreach and a new staff member, I just thought I would bring up the fact that at Lot, we are also increasing staffing for education outreach. I'm trying to promote a program where we would go into high, we would create like, partner with high school teachers, try to do sort of more of a hot, like a higher level science programming rather than kind of the more general middle school stuff that Lot has done in the past. But since we're beefing it up on Thurston County side with solid waste and wastewater, there might be a chance for a partnership, conversation, synergy there to work together on maybe some of the program you're doing. Just as a heads up, that should be coming up in the next year for Lot.
Thank you.
Good to know. And with that, that's it. Any questions? No questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That, that rounds off the agenda for this morning and leads us to commissioner items. Are there any commissioner items that anyone would like to share?
I don't know if I have one to share, I have a question for Robin. Robin, you said when, when we got that legal opinion from our prosecuting attorney about coming down here, that we consulted with the Attorney General's office, is any of that in writing? That communication?
We would have to ask Scott Cushing, but I don't believe that we got anything in writing from the AG. The things that we do have in writing, our guidance from MRSC, it's part of her, their purchasing guidelines. We have information from the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services, who is responsible for interpreting these laws for the entire state of Washington. But, and we have state law itself.
So at what point do we have a conversation about the, the auditors?
What to do next?
Yeah, yeah. How, deliberate on our thoughts and what our next steps are?
You know, we can look to schedule that, maybe bring that to one of the planning sessions so we can have a conversation. I think there is a lot of nuances and details that we'd like to brief the entire board on if they'd like to go into that much detail. And then also talk about what are our next steps and recommended implementation of some of the recommendations.
Because what did they say they would be publishing it?
In about a week, yeah.
And then we've got to kind of have our ducks in a row.
Be ready to respond.
Okay.
This was.
Yeah, but. We got from our attorney is far more detailed and than anything that we received from the state, so.
And I think that's one of the challenges commissioners is that it kind of came down to us presenting a very detailed case and the response being, well, our attorney disagrees with you. And when our attorneys did meet, we made that case.
Yeah.
They went away and they came back with, well, that's the determination of our lawyers is this and we are going to stand by our findings. Because in that nuance, we even suggested, well, then downgrade it from an audit finding to a, a management letter of, hey, we understand this was complex. What I am how happy, if there is any silver lining, is that in the presentation, they were more open and communicative about how complex this was. Because the first time we met with them, they weren't, and that caused us a lot of concern because they were making it sound like this was a black and white, open and shut case. And our position, as Chair Mensah mentioned, was, no, this is very nuanced and we did a level of due diligence. The issue is what our interpretation, our view of it, you had to go to your lawyers to say, no, we disagree. And it was really even after our last meeting that they were still reviewing some of the information to determine if the furniture, which is that 1.8 number, we thought we were going to be able to narrow that down significantly by several hundreds of thousands of dollars because of the look at what are, what's the definition of furniture fixtures and equipment? And what's the fix and what's not a fix? So the team spent, I think, a couple of weeks of going over line by line of what they believe certain furniture was a fixed because the auditor said, yeah, we're going to review that and we think that's going to be part of the determination.
Because the auditor's attorney told our attorneys that in his opinion, not everything was furniture, that part of it could have been identified as.
Fixtures.
Fixtures.
What we're talking about, the difference is if you look about, at some of the cubicles in the offices, everything that's built, that's bolted into the wall versus the chair and a mobile desk.
Built to specification for this space.
That's how narrow things got down in, in our discussion.
But even with that, if, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but even with that, the state auditor decided to disallow all of it, even though the AG said that they could have allowed some of it, in his opinion. So the state auditor has made decisions that.
Well, yeah, that's why I, you know, I mentioned that, you know, there were several things that where the attorneys had the conversations where they were like, yeah, that's definitely like a gray area, right? Like, it's just, and it really lays on the discretion of our clients, which is the auditors, right? On kind of which way they proceed to go, but, and, you know, for me, it felt like they really came down with, with a hammer, with, with the findings instead of like, I think the other frustrating part with, for me was the fact that. And Commissioner Mensah related it out very well of like, the tools for us, like, what is it, right? That we could have done that, you know, would have corrected this action? And there wasn't really that, that laid out, like, okay, maybe if this avenue would have been like taken, it was just a kind of like, you're wrong and that's kind of the line and.
I think it's beyond a gray area. I mean, I asked, so I wasn't at the meeting between attorneys, but after that meeting, I asked our attorneys, are you convinced, did they convince you that we, that we messed up, you know, by the legal analysis they provided? And they said, no. So, I mean, and, and I, nothing I've seen in writing convinces me that they were wrong about that. Our argument is more persuasive than theirs. I am, I am a lawyer and I can tell you that nothing, if I were a judge in this case, nothing provided by the state auditor's office would have caused me to rule in favor of the state auditor's attorney's findings. And I think that does a disservice to the public because now they're left confused about, you know, what should we have done? What, how can we make sure, you know, we, we are all on the same page going forward? So it's a really interesting and bizarre process. They want to talk about, oh, call our helpline all along the way and we'll help you and we'll guide you. And, and yet that didn't work in this case. Nobody has ever claimed that the county didn't act in good faith. There is no evidence that we got advice, piece of advice A, and we did B. There is no evidence in this case of any of that. So how do we actually look at this process and say, this process is designed to improve things going forward? It's not there.
That is a fair assessment of how things played out.
Their, their recommendations seem kind of soft as well. They're like, hmm, maybe you could do this. But, so we're going to set up a time to?
Yeah, we can go through it step by step.
Okay.
And the finding by finding and provide the perspective. And if it's the board's pleasure, we can even have our counsel here to walk through what, what the interpretation was because staff did do a lot of due diligence to get to that point.
And we don't necessarily have to completely accept their analysis and recommendations, right? I mean, we can, I mean, there's, there's things that can be done or you can draw a line in the sand in a sense.
They're the policemen, they wrote the ticket.
They're not really.
Yeah, they wrote.
They're, they're, I don't know.
They kind of are.
Yeah.
They kind of are.
Nobody's going to, they're not going to.
They're not going to take your birthday away.
Yeah.
No, but it's not a good thing to go through.
So I think that there are some risks for not following their guidance, especially when it comes to repaying REIT for the furniture. And I, I would defer to our attorneys on whether or not those risks should be discussed in an open session.
Okay.
There's a whole bunch of stuff, we don't have time to discuss it all here, I don't think today.
We can talk to the attorneys and come back with the best approach to have that in-depth conversation with the board.
Okay. Any other commissioner items?
I do have a couple, but I'm going to be here this afternoon and I'll save them for the commissioners' check-in.
Okay. All right, hearing no further items, meeting is adjourned.